I will now bring this January 7th, 2019, meeting of the City Commission to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order is the roll call, and all are present tonight. Next thing we need to do is make sure that we do the administration of the oath of office to our recently elected and re-elected commissioners, so Commissioner Perschbacher, Commissioner Tolles, and Commissioner Gillis, if you could meet me down at the podium. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Michigan. And the state of Michigan. And the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office on behalf of all the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda is the election of mayor and vice mayor. So I will proceed with the election of the mayor. Once we have a mayor elected, the mayor will then proceed with electing the vice mayor. So I will now open the nominations for mayor. Do I have a nomination? Yes.
I nominate Will Joseph for mayor.
Commissioner Lalone nominates Commissioner Joseph. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Tolles.
I will nominate Commissioner Tony Kulik.
Commissioner Tolles nominates Commissioner Kulik. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, so we have two nominations for mayor. And if you will recall, in last year, you changed Chapter 30 slightly in the Code of Ordinances, so we will be conducting the election of the mayor slightly different than we have in the past. So I'm just gonna kinda go through that real quick to let you know, to remind you, that each nominee will be named one at a time in the order that they were nominated. And what I would like is to have each commissioner who wants to vote for that commissioner to please say aye and raise your hand. I'll go to the next commissioner, same thing, say aye, raise your hand. We'll do that until we get through both of them. And just a reminder, you can only vote once, so either you're voting for one or the other, and we'll tally those. The first commissioner who gets four votes will be elected mayor. Any questions? All right. So, do Commissioner Joseph first. All those in favor of Commissioner Joseph for mayor, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand. We have four votes, let me get those down. Can you keep your hands up real quick, just to make sure we get the right ones? Okay, all those in favor of Commissioner Kulik, please raise your hand. All right, three. That was Gillis, Kulik, Tolles. So we have four votes for Commissioner Joseph for mayor. Congratulations, Mayor Joseph. I will hand the meeting over to you.
Okay. So next order of business is the election of the vice mayor, and I will open nominations for the vice mayor. Commissioner Ling.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Laura Gillis.
Any other nominations for vice mayor?
What was that nomination again?
Commissioner Laura Gillis.
Any more nominations for vice mayor? Close the nomination process. And we'll do the same process, I guess. All those in favor of Commissioner Gillis for vice mayor?
Aye.
That's anonymous. Congratulations, Commissioner Gillis. Next we'll move on to set time and day of regular meetings.
Yes, we are recommending that you stay with your standard meeting schedule, which would be the second and fourth Mondays of each month, but that would begin on Monday, January 28th. And there would be two exceptions to that schedule this year. The first exception would be at the end of May, because Memorial Day happens to fall on the fourth Monday, so the schedule we've laid out would recommend that you move that meeting to Tuesday, May 28th. And the second meeting in December would be, if we need it, would be awful close to the holiday, so we've recommended that that meeting be moved to Thursday, or Monday, December 16th, which is the third Monday. So that's our recommendation for your meeting schedule.
Commissioner Kulik.
I'd like to recommend, I'd like to move that we begin the meetings at six o'clock rather than seven o'clock on the Mondays as outlined by Nancy.
Do I have a second on that motion? Commissioner Lalone, is that a second? Do we have any discussion?
Can I ask for a question? I just wanna make sure, was this a, sorry, was this a motion to accept the recommendation on the dates and the time, but except to have the meeting starting at 6:30, so the whole motion is, is
Six o'clock.
I mean, oh, at six o'clock? Oh, my goodness. So the motion is as presented, except for the time at six o'clock, is that what we're doing? Okay, thank you very much.
So there's been a motion inseconded?
Yes.
To start at six?
Right.
Okay. That would be very difficult for me personally. I have a job, goes till five o'clock, usually have to have time to come home and change of clothes, and as anyone knows, I like to get here a little bit early so that I can greet the people that come into the chambers, and so I will be voting no on this, because that would not work with my work schedule.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
I have also, I usually work until seven o'clock every night. I have limited my times on Mondays, so I'm done at six. So in order to come be here by six o'clock, I'd have to limit my time at five, which means that I would take two spaces out of my weekly schedule for clients. So I would prefer that we stay at the seven o'clock.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those not in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Kulik.
Make a motion that we start at 6:30.
Do I have a second? Being no second to the motion, the motion fails. Commissioner Ling.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the recommendation as presented in the packet to start at seven on the dates indicated.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Kulik.
Proclaim an amendment that we start the meetings Memorial Day through Labor Day at 6:30, like we did last year.
Is there a second to Commissioner Kulik's motion? Commissioner Lalone? Discussion? Commissioner Gillis? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I know we did this last year, and it seemed that we were trying to accommodate so we could get out before dark, but I don't know how many times we actually were able to get out before dark. And I said this same comment last year about changing the start time for, in interest of the public, so they wouldn't be confused, or they show up at seven o'clock when we start at 6:30. All of our other prominent boards, Planning Commission, ZBA, all start at seven o'clock. I find it a little bit confusing if I was a layman or a public person who wasn't following the exact start time and showed up at seven, thinking that all our regular boards start at seven, and found out it started at 6:30. So I know we were trying to accommodate to be able to get out a little bit earlier during the summer, but that very rarely happened. So in earnest of trying to keep a regular start time that everybody can depend on, mostly the public if they wanted to show up and attend our meetings, I would still like to start at seven.
Commissioner Kulik.
With the effort that the city does to promote when our meetings start between the internet, our city webpage, public hearing notices that are in the paper, there's no excuse for people not to know that during the summer, our meetings would start at 6:30, so I will be supporting this.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of starting at, is it 6:30, Tony? 6:30 between Memorial Day and Labor Day, show by voting aye?
Aye.
And those not in favor? Aye. Motion fails. I believe that we're back to the original motion of our set meeting times at 7:00 PM. Is there any more discussion? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those not? Motion passes. Seven zero. Okay. Next on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have a proclamation in support of Peacemaking Recognition Day.
Yes, and Laura Gorley, representing Mount Pleasant Public Schools, is here to meet you at the podium, mayor, as you read the proclamation.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a proclamation. A proclamation is an action, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a peacemaking proclamation for January 21st. Peacemaking is an action, activity, event, or way of life which reduces or leads to a reduction of violence and contributes to a more cooperative and just way in which we live together. And whereas, peacemaking is a lifelong process that begins with ourselves. And whereas, we live in a time when violence, hatred, and crime dominate the public media, and these attitudes are pervasive in our children's worldview through television, movies, toys, popular music, videos, and video games. And whereas, we would all prefer to live in peace in our physical and social environments in a way which honors and respects others and their differences as well as ourselves. And whereas, our youth have an inherent idealism to make this a better community, country, and world to which, in which to live. Now therefore, I, mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2019, Peacemaking Recognition Day. In Mount Pleasant, and affirm that the peacemaking efforts of its youth are valued and appreciated, and that these efforts contribute significantly to the quality of life in Mount Pleasant. And further, the City Commission supports the nonviolent resolution of misunderstandings and conflicts whenever and however they occur, as demonstrated by the life of Martin Luther King Jr. In witness whereof, I hereon too, set my hand in the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this seventh day of January, 2019.
I've been on the Peacemaking Committee all of these 28 years that we've been honoring students in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. It's for me particularly meaningful, because these are students that maybe would not win an award for an athletic achievement, or maybe an academic achievement, but because of their character, their heart, their everyday actions get noted by their teachers or someone in the school system for being, working towards making the school culture and the school communities in the schools where they attend better. What a wonderful award, what a wonderful thing for me to be involved in all these wonderful years. We thank you to Nancy Nagler, who originally started this award many years ago, and it's a real honor for me to continue to be on that committee and to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. And how meaningful that the city is honoring this all these years, making Mount Pleasant really a special place. Thank you so much.
As the mayor is sitting down, our next presentation this evening is going to be on a change in law in regard to exemptions for small business taxpayers. And our city assessor was intending to give the presentation this evening, but he had a commitment come up in Lansing, and so our finance director, Mary Ann Cornexel, is going to go over it. And the primary piece of the, or the primary purpose of the presentation is to make sure you know about the change in the law, and also to give you some indication about all of the outreach we're doing to make sure our taxpayers know about it.
Okay, I'm gonna just take a few moments of your time to do a brief presentation on personal property tax and the small taxpayer exemption for you and for the businesses and taxpayers who are viewing this. I know the PowerPoint that's in front of you and that I'm gonna be presenting is quite wordy and more than what you can digest on the slides, but it's meant to be a reference for the taxpayers when it goes on our website. So I'm just gonna highlight tonight the high points of it. What is personal property? Personal property, it is equipment and equipment used in commercial and industrial businesses. The real property is the building itself. Personal property is anything that can be moved. So for instance, in a restaurant, the personal property would be their grills, their ovens, their coolers, their tables, their chairs. Personal property does not include inventory. In 2012, the state legislature instituted the small taxpayer exemption. It exempts all personal property that with a depreciated value of less than $80,000 in a jurisdiction. Personal property tax value is self-reported to the assessor annually. If businesses qualify for the exemption, they complete a Form 5076 rather than the personal property statement. This must be filed by February 20th. The assessor can't just grant an exemption because they know a business has only office furniture and computers, but it must be filed by the taxpayer to get that exemption. If the form is filed late, there's nothing provided in the law for the assessor to take that. So for instance, if you get your July tax bill, and it's for a value of less than $80,000, there's nothing the assessor can do, he can't take your form at that time, you're gonna have to pay that tax. Attached is an example of the form. I know this is real small, but this shows you how simple the form is. There's several boxes, most of those will be filled in by us when it's mailed to you. And then the taxpayer just needs to simply fill in a couple of the boxes, certify that their value is less than $80,000, and sign it and return it. What's new for 2019 is that previously, you had to fill in that form every year to get your exemption. In 2019, the legislation was changed, so you file the form once, and it's in place until, going forward until you no longer qualify. So in 2019, you file it, you're good until anything changes in your business and your value goes over $80,000 again. By law, the assessor is going to be auditing these accounts that are exempt every year to verify that they still qualify. Also by law, if the taxpayer no longer qualifies for exemption, they must notify the assessor. Even though the exemption has been placed since 2012, we still have 240 taxpayers who qualify for the exemption and haven't filed for it, and then thus are paying for taxes that they wouldn't have to if they had filed for the exemption. So therefore, we're doing this reach out tonight by doing this presentation to you that will also be put on our website to push this information out to folks so that they know about the exemption, and in particular, that if you file it this year, you don't have to file it in the future. So some other things that we're doing is included in the personal property tax statement packet, which was mailed today in this yellow envelope, there is a letter from the assessor explaining the exemption, and also the exemption form. And we printed the exemption form on yellow, so you can just pull out that form, which is on yellow paper. We're also going to be sending an email to all the email addresses that the downtown development coordinator has in her database of businesses downtown. We're gonna be putting this information in the city newsletter, on social media, and in our blog, and we're also gonna be asking the Chamber of Commerce to include it in their newsletter. So we hope by this outreach that people will now be looking for this envelope in their mail, and if they have value greater than $80,000, they'll file their personal property tax statement, and if it's less than $80,000 depreciated, they'll fill in that form and get that exemption. Does anybody have any questions? I made it without coughing.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our public input on agenda items. This is the time for the public to comment on anything that's on tonight's agenda. If you step up to the podium, you have five minutes. Seeing no one who wants to come forward, I will end the public input. Now we have receipt of petitions and communications.
You just have four communications this evening. The first is the report on pending items. The second one is the November minutes of the Planning Commission, and the November minutes of the Airport Advisory Board. And the last item under receipt of communications is a correspondence received from Joyce Baugh regarding the Citizens Advisory Board.
I'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that wants, anybody wants removed to the consent calendar? Or move from? Seeing none, Nancy, would you like to go over the consent calendar?
Sure. The items we're recommending this evening include the approval of the minutes of both your special enclosed meeting of December 4th and your regular meeting of December 10th. We're also recommending tonight that we start the special assessment process for a pedestrian lighting project that will take place in 2019 on Pleasant, Clayton, Gaylord, and May Streets. As some of you know, we've been installing pedestrian lighting since 2014, and in cases, in prior installations, there we have created special assessment districts, and those areas that are zoned as CD4 areas, well, actually, previous they were M1 and M2 areas, which I had an error in our packet when, on those references, but under today's zoning, they would be the CD4 areas. So the total cost of the project of the installation of the lighting on all of those areas is $159,000, but the area that's within the CD4 zoning area is approximately $99,000. And so we're recommending that we start the special assessment process for that portion of the project this evening. Our special assessment process, according to our ordinance, is fairly lengthy. It requires five resolutions and two public hearings before a special assessment is finalized. So tonight, we're recommending you approve Resolution 1 and 2. And Resolution 1 merely indicates you have a desire to see the project move forward, and then Resolution Number 2 sets a public hearing for January 28th to obtain input on the project. Any properties that are within the district will be mailed a letter informing them of the special assessment public hearing, and based on prior comments we had last year about these hearings, we will be sure to include in that letter what the proposed special assessment amount is per property, and what the proposed repayment terms are for it, so that individuals know that when they come to the first public hearing. So we're recommending Resolutions 1 and 2 for that this evening. The next item we have on the consent calendar is to extend the authorization that you had given the finance director at the end of last year. As you know, it's been standard that we authorize the finance director to authorize the issuance of payrolls and warrants to deal with year-end issues. And when we decided to have the first meeting, the first Monday this year, instead of the second Monday, we had an unintended consequence of creating quite a long gap before our next meeting, and that could cause problems with our year-end processing if we hold off on releasing checks. So we're recommending that you extend the authorization for Mary Ann to continue to release those checks until January 14th. And then the last item we have on the consent calendar is for you to formally approve the appointments of certain city officials to some of the boards and commissions that city staff serve on. So our recommendation is that you would appoint Mary Ann Cornexel, the finance director, to the building authority. You would appoint myself to the local development finance authority, and Mary Ann Cornexel would be the alternate. We're recommending you appoint Fire Chief Rick Beltnick as the representative to the Central Dispatch Governing Board, with Police Captain Andy Latham as the alternate. We're recommending Street Superintendent Matt Weaver to the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility Board, myself as the legislative coordinator with MML, and Public Relations Director Darcy Orlick to the Mid-Michigan Area Cable and Telecommunications Consortium with Jeremy Howard as the alternate, and finally, Bill Merdaza to the Middle Michigan Development Corporation Board with myself as the alternate.
Do I see a motion to accept the consent agenda items? Commissioner Kulik?
Move to accept the consent as presented.
Seconded by Commissioner Ling. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those not in favor? Seven zero. Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, consider amendment of the leaf hauling contract.
Last fall, the City Commission approved a contract that included a price of $105 per hour for leaf hauling services, but it included a not-to-exceed amount of $19,000. And based on the activity that we had in 2017, we felt the $19,000 was an appropriate ceiling to put on that contract. Surprisingly enough, as we began hauling the leaves in the fall of 2019... Surprisingly enough, as we began hauling the leaves in the fall of 2018, last fall, we picked up and hauled 60% more cubic yards of leaves than we had in 2017, primarily due to the different weather that we experienced. So, what this ended up resulting in is on the very last day of pickup, as the leaf hauler was doing it for us, we ended up exceeding the $19,000 of the not-to-exceed contract by about $2,200. To ensure that doesn't happen again in the future, we will begin looking at multiple years of history to see what the volumes have been, instead of just focusing on the most current year, and we will begin tracking hours by the day, instead of waiting until the invoices are received. So, what we're recommending to you this evening is you authorize an amendment to that contract for the overage of just under $2,200, so that we can appropriately pay the leaf hauling contractor for the services that they were, that we were provided.
Commissioner Cooley?
Move to approve the change in the contract.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Tolles. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those not? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have agenda number 14, consider appointments to the various city boards and commissions as recommended by the appointments committee. Commissioner Ling?
Commissioner Ling is going to cover that?
Right. I'd like to, as chairman of the appointments committee, I'd like to move that we approve the reappointments and reconfirmation of existing appointments as recommended, and I'm going to go through the list with all of the reappointments and confirmations. On the Principal Shopping District Board, we're reappointing Curtis Ritchie to a full term that will end December 31st, 2022, and reconfirming the existing appointments of Sarah Christensen, that will end December 31st, 2019, Rachel Agardy, that will end December 31st, 2021, and Steve Bissell, that will end December 31st, 2021. And for the Tax Increment Finance Authority, we are moving the reappointment of James Horton II for a term ending December 31st, 2022, Rick Swindlehurst for a term ending December 31st, 2022, and Brian Weefrich for a term ending December 31st, 2022, and reconfirming the existing appointments of Sarah Christensen for December 31st, 2019, and Rachel Blizzard for December 31st, 2021.
Commissioner Cooley?
Support the motion.
Commissioner Ling?
And I'd just like to comment, this came about because we did make a major restructuring of the Principal Shopping District and the Tax Increment Finance Authority, and among other things, separating the boards and reducing the numbers, and I would like to publicly thank the current members of the Principal Shopping District and the Tax Increment Finance Authority for their cooperation, as we had tried to do this in a way where everybody ended up with a position, and as part of that, one member was willing to serve on the Economic Development Corporation rather than these boards, and with that cooperation, everybody is still remaining on at least one of these boards, so I want to thank them for their cooperation.
All those in favor of accepting the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those not? I think it passed seven zero. Okay. Now, we have our second chance for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on non-agenda items or any city-related business. You just come to the podium, state your address and your name, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Tiana Gillis. I live at 902 West Michigan Street. I'd just like to say, as a City of Mount Pleasant citizen, that I really wish that we had the opportunity to elect our mayor and vice mayor for this city, rather than just the commissioners sitting on the board getting to elect it for themselves, because I think we would have different results than we had tonight. Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I will close this public comment section.
Mayor, you inadvertently missed the announcements on city-related issues, I believe, so you may want to go back to that agenda item.
I did, thank you. Do we have any announcements on city-related business? Commissioner Cooley?
John, if you'd like to tell folks out in TV land when the Christmas tree pickup starts and ends?
Reminder that if you had a live Christmas tree and you're done with it, you need to put it out the first two weeks of this month, so by the end of this week, you should have it out in front of your house.
Commissioner Ling?
I'd just like to mention that while we have filled lots of positions in the last couple of months, we still do need some people to serve on three boards where we have openings. One is Material Recovery Facility, which is a recycling center, and we still need a citizen representative, so if there's somebody who's really interested in sustainability and recycling, who would like to submit an application, we'd appreciate it. The Long Term Development Finance Authority, which deals with the research park as part of CMU, has an opening, and also the Board of Review, which reviews appeals to tax assessments, so if anybody's interested, there are applications online, you can just go to the city website, go to boards and commissions, and you'll get to a page that will allow you to be able to apply for one of those positions. Thank you.
I will close these announcements on city-related business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn?
Oh, right. We have a recess, and then we have a work session tonight for the attorney training session on the Open Meetings Act.
And for that training session, commissioners, we're recommending that we move upstairs to Conference Room A, where we typically have work sessions, just because that allows for a better discussion for Mr. Homier to go through the training session. It's certainly open to the public for anyone who wants to join us upstairs, there's extra chairs. Because it's more of a training session as opposed to a discussion, we were not intending to have that part of the meeting filmed, so we're expecting that you will just adjourn at the end of that meeting and will not be coming back down here for a formal adjournment since there's no other discussion tonight.
Thank you. Okay.
We're in recess?
I think we're in recess.